Good, how are you doing?
One o'clock, Sarah, are we on?
We're on.
Okay, everybody, welcome. It's one o'clock. The gang is here. We're going to talk aging stuff and we're going to talk ARPA stuff, Tom.
Yeah, Lindsey got an update on, because we couldn't have a staff on Tuesday, just the next steps in ARPA. And then the main topic of the day is we want to talk about the Aging Department. And when Lindsey's done, we'll kind of come back to that.
Thank you. You all.
Sorry. Hello, Commissioners. So, we do have some exciting updates to talk about with ARPA. I want to talk a little bit about the process before we get into the details of what you see in front of you. So, you all had instructed us to come back each quarter with a revised spend plan. And so, what we would typically do with that direction is come back to you, May 1st, with a spend plan proposal. However, while we're prepared to do that on May 1st, one of the things that you also need to hear is what departments are coming and asking you for through your budget hearings. Some of those will show up on this, oh, sorry, everyone. Some of those will show up on your ARPA spreadsheet, some won't. But we wanted you to have the whole lay of the land before you made a decision on a direction with an ARPA spend plan. So, you'll also have some workshops in that time. You'll hear about capital improvement programs. So, there's going to be a lot of information thrown at you over the next couple of weeks. And we want you to have a chance to absorb that before we ask you to make a decision on what exactly the next steps will be with ARPA. So, what you have before you then is a spreadsheet that shows, the bottom table here is what you all have already approved. This is the spend plan as it exists today. We're not asking you to approve anything with that, it's just there for reference. So, then if you come up to that middle table, what you'll see is revision to the figures in our current spend plan, just if we want to continue what you're doing today. Not even talking about all of the new rules that allow you to add personnel now past 2024. So, under that scenario, we have asked all departments that have funding to give us new revised estimates based on their actual experience year-to-date and what they truly expect to occur through year-end. And so, you'll see that just based on that, there are some cells highlighted in yellow. That's where there is a significant percentage difference versus the green table below. And we've added some real quick notes that just explain the difference. So, for example, in HR recruitment, dollar-wise, it's not a lot of difference. Percentage-wise, it's a big difference. And that's just because benefits have been added in and updated for what's actually happening. Looking at your backlog section, number 26, 27, and 30, or I'm sorry, 29, you can see that those costs have fluctuated based on actual personnel costs for DA and District Court that has resulted in a reduction. However, for the sheriff with the pay adjustments that were approved earlier this year, that flows through to the ARPA-funded positions. And so, there has been an increase because of that. Then you can see that within Corrections, the number has gone down. That's because we had planned for more CIP costs to be incurred, but those are actually done. So, there's significant savings there from what you had seen previously. And then, within row 30, the backlog for space we have now, it was your intention, it always was your intention, once we got the new guidance last November, to continue to fund ARPA, or I'm sorry, to continue to fund roughened rent for '25 and '26. We didn't know what those costs would look like. And so, that had been highlighted in your last one, it's something we needed to talk about. That is now incorporated. But because of the savings elsewhere in the plan, what you can see is based on this iteration, this middle table, we would have essentially $17 million that remains as contingency funds, which would be available to you to use for revenue replacement. So, last time it was at 17.3, now it's at 17.0 million. So, even with those fluctuations, even in adding in two new years of ARPA rent, we're still actually pretty close to where we were before. So, when we come to you with a proposal on May 22nd, which is when this will be on your agenda, we're going to recommend at that point in time that we do a third of this dollar amount as a transfer into the general fund to start your revenue replacement cycle. And at that point, we'll also look to you to see if you have thoughts or suggestions on how you want to allocate those funds. We have a couple of suggestions that are going to come to you through CIP, things that are right now being proposed for 2025 that we think are more urgent. And so, we'll have some ideas for you, but also want to know priorities of the Commission. And then, of course, you'll hear through your budget hearings what this top table really shows. And that is the idea that position costs could potentially continue now under the new ARPA rules past 2024. So, this top table takes into effect everything we've already talked about, all of the updates to our current spend plan. But it also takes into account what those additional compensation costs would be. And so, you can see under this iteration, we would propose to have 27.5 FTEs funded from ARPA in 2025. We also would propose to have 27.5 in 2026. And you can see how those all break out primarily in the sheriff's office. And again, there's going to be a lot of conversation with the sheriff as that camera and lock project is completed and that offset in the additional number of positions and those kind of things. So, still lots of conversation to be had, even though we're bringing this to you today. And so, what I would point out is on row 17, there's a section off to the right that says the difference versus the update only. If you were to choose to continue to fund personnel, we would expect the total additional cost between '25 and '26 to be about 5.0 million. And again, a lot of that is driven, we had estimated about 2.1 million per year before. That was back before we had the significant adjustments to the sheriff's office compensation structure. And because that is so much of what this would be, that does influence that overall cost. So, yes, sir.
So, you're going to bring a proposal on May 22nd, that's a Wednesday VOCC meeting. Are we going to have any conversations prior?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you start your hearings next Wednesday, May 1st, your budget hearings with departments. We'll start that with a discussion about the financial forecast. Then you will go through a process of hearing from all departments on what their baseline needs are, plus all of their decision packages. You'll have a benefits conversation within May. You'll also have a compensation discussion in May. All of those things are factors that play into this. Also, through those hearings, you're going to hear about our tentative recommended CIP. And I will, it will not surprise you to learn that the costs are greater than we currently have in our current CIP. So, there's going to be a lot of opportunity to talk about how to use those ARPA revenue replacement dollars in the most strategic fashion to either buy down the long-term amount of debt we have to have through CIP, if you want to use it to address, you know, more urgent projects that are needs that are going to compete for tax dollars. So, you will have lots of conversations starting May 1st, leading up to that May 22nd date. I think that will make this decision maybe harder, maybe better, I don't know, at least a lot more informed. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah, thanks.
Can you clarify one thing for me? In your top chart, you're showing 15 FTEs for the Sheriff's Department for cameras and so forth. That's additional FTEs or subtracting FTEs?
So, it's backlog slash ADF locks and cameras. Before, we've broken out on two lines here, I consolidated it into one. So, this is what they are currently carrying through ARPA today. It would be to continue that through the life of ARPA. That's because those locks and cameras aren't anticipated to be done and completed until 2026, just because it's going to take time to do that, because you have to close down pods and do all of that. So, it's not like our other projects where we can get it done quickly. So, we do anticipate that there will be an offset down the road, but not within the life of ARPA.
But then what's those cameras, when those FTEs go away?
Yes.
Thank you.
At least the 14 inmate deputies do. He does still have some judicial deputies. He does still have the crisis counselor and a warrants clerk and some things that he would like to continue funding past that point. But in terms of the deputies in the jail, those will go away.
Cameras were supposed to replace deputies.
Right. 14 is what we have a commitment to at this time. So, lots to come.
As we go through the budget hearings, when we come to those lines in the individual budgets, Lindsey will call those out, so you'll know what we're talking about here.
It's a weird year and a weird process, but it's a good opportunity. That's what I've got for you. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, and now Chairman, you're ready to go to talk about?
Let's do it.
Okay, so, we've had a lot of discussion. We had discussion during the retreat this year. And I think what we want to spend a little bit of time with is kind of talking historically about the Aging Department, kind of take it down to the studs and build back up historically how this was, how this department has matured and developed into the department it is today. And then, a little bit of discussion at the end on some senior center funding and other things that Commissioners specifically asked for. So, with that, I turn it over to Annette, and Tim is here to answer questions and we'll...
Tom, before you get into it, I don't want to concentrate hours on senior center funding. If we just make it equitable, I'm happy and we can cut to the chase. So, I don't know how your discussion's going to go. But if that's what we're going to spend all of our time on today, we're wasting time. Just make it equitable and let's move forward.
Let's, I'm sorry, Commissioner, do you have a comment? Let's go through the historical part of the discussion. And as we start transitioning into senior centers, we can stop there and pause and see how the Commission wants to handle.
Hi, Annette.
Hey. My presentation. That's a different one. That's the demographics, it gets inserted in here. That's okay. No, that's not mine. That's okay. It's called Department of Aging and Disabilities, subtitled History, Services, and Senior Center Funding. Well, shall we go ahead and get started? I think you all have a handout. Is that good? That way, we're not sitting here waiting on that. So, you have in front of you some handouts, some information. So, that will be in addition to the PowerPoint. You have some other information that were provided to you as handouts. So, those will be for you to review. What I plan to do today is to go over kind of the history, it's kind of a deep dive, history of the department, funding, services provided, the Sedgwick County demographics. We'll be, Jack Joseph is here to kind of go over some of that information for you. Because I know that was an area of interest. The senior center funding history, funding and challenges. Little bit of current information at the national level. There's some activity going around about senior centers. And so, I wanted to bring that to you for your information. And then, we will end with funding options for consideration and open it up for your dialogue to kind of look at some of those options and then have discussions about what you want to do. So, next page is the history of the department. So, we're going to start at a high level here. In 1965, the Older Americans Act was authorized, which was the first national kind of action related to older adults. It really kind of set the stage for what was to happen and begin to fund some activities around older adults. Up until that point in time, there really wasn't a lot of people living to age 65. So, it's kind of the beginning of the history. It's like we've got a lot more people aging and how are we going, what are their needs? What are the gaps? What are the services they need? So, that started it. Then every few years, the way the Older Americans Act, which is that the federal level is set up, they reauthorize it to modernize it and add in new services and new terminology and new activities. So, in 1973, in the reauthorization, what it did was it created the Area Agencies on Aging. So, it really started the work at the local level to start providing some planning and development. It wasn't initially for services, it was let's help get some funding. So, in 1974, the state designated, because the State Unit on Aging designates who the AAA's are, they designated the Metropolitan Planning Department in Wichita as a Central Plains Area Agency on Aging to serve Butler Harvey and Sedgwick County. So, it's always been a tri-county model. And the reason was with the planning department, because that was the initial focus. Start planning, start looking at what the demographics are, what the needs are, what are the resources and what are the gaps. So, in 1980, the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission created the Department of Aging to administer the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging. So, it was moved from the planning department to Sedgwick County. And that was to increase aging activities in Sedgwick County and for Sedgwick County to administer that for a tri-county area. And at that time, an internal local agreement was signed between the three counties, Butler Harvey and Sedgwick. And Sedgwick was the administrator and had the responsibility to house the Area Agency on Aging and to help fund that, to help have that capacity for that. So, the Department of Aging and Disabilities. So, as an area agency on aging, that's it. So, as an area agency on aging, the responsibilities are mandated by the Older Americans Act. So, those responsibilities are advocacy on behalf of older adults at all level, local, state, and federal. Planning for services, planning for the needs, monitoring the service provision, development of new services and oversight of that, and funding. So, the model says, area agencies on aging get money, but you need to as much as possible, or where appropriate, fund that to serve to community providers. So, you're developing providers and you're giving them funding and then overseeing that. Now, there are situations, and a lot of situations, where it's more appropriate for the area agency on aging to do that. Either they have the skill set, or they have the experience, or you can't provide providers, or it's more efficient to do it that way. So, it's kind of a broker model. So, that's, the main focus is to help older adults at the highest social risk stay in the community. It's basically a community-based and to help older people stay in the community as long as possible with choice and dignity. And so, from the outset, it's really been focused on using federal and other dollars, state and local, to meet the needs of those at highest risk. Socially disadvantaged, low income, socially isolated. And then, the list of priority populations has changed over the years, it got reauthorized. So, currently, the department is funded with Older Americans Act, which is the federal dollars, Medicaid funds, state funds, and grants. So, there's a variety of sources of funding that flow in through the department for the three county service areas. And I said before, services are provided directly by staff and through contracted providers in the community to address unmet needs, gaps, and services. And then, we use local dollars to help supplement that gap between what the OAA funds and what the needs are. So, the department services provided include the nutrition services. And that is the home-delivered, which is often referred to as meals on wheels, and then the congregate, so that's site-based meals for older adults. In-home and community-based services. So, that would be things like homemaker, attendant, care, services that are delivered in the home. Some of the senior companion programs, some of the other services that are actually provided in the person's home. And then, there's community-based. So, those would be things that are provided more in the community, where a person goes and gets services out in the community. And there's a variety, legal aid would be one of those, or some of the counseling services or support groups, things like caregiver services. Transportation is another service we provide. We use some federal dollars for that under Older Americans Act. And then, we have funding from the Department of Transportation, Wichita Transit. So, there's a braiding of funding to provide transportation for older adults and caregivers. You've heard me talk about the Aging and Disability Resource Center, also referred to as ADRC. And that provides for the Medicaid functional assessments for those on the frail elderly, brain injury, and physical disabilities waiver. Provides options counseling for anybody old, any older adult or person with disability that call in through our statewide call center. So, Central Plains operates a statewide call center that is a toll-free number for anybody seeking information, assistance, resources, for anybody needing long-term supports and services. So, it's not just for low income, it's for public and private benefits and people of all ages. Then we have the care, which is the pre-nursing home assessment. It's provided by our staff that go out and do a functional eligibility assessment for anybody seeking nursing home care. So, that, again, that's all ages and people with physical disabilities and older adults. Have the administrative case management, which goes along with the Medicaid functional assessment. Once a person's been assessed for that, if they want help filling out the Medicaid application, that's what administration case management is. And then, as you know, last July, this Community Development and Disabilities Organization was consolidated within the Department of Aging and Disabilities. So, county-funded services, which are the tax, aging tax meal in general, would be, again, we're supplementing with some home-delivered meals through senior services and Moms Meals. Moms Meals provides those meals, 14-day supply. It's delivered to the individual's home, and that's more for the rural area because, and for people with special dietary needs. Senior Services primarily serves only within the city limits of Wichita. So, that one was added on a few years ago. The Senior Employment Program is to help older adults get jobs. A lot of older adults might never have applied for a job online, don't know how to do all of that, don't know how to write a resume, need some specialized assistance to get employment. The Envision Senior Program, which helps people that are losing vision or low sight to help them adapt to and be able to manage with some special assistance. Care and Health provides some prescription assistance and help with vision, glasses, things like that. Guadalupe provides a medical voucher and health screening for those that are uninsured. Kansas Legal Services, there's a lot of legal issues impacting older adults, guardian conservatorship, durable power of attorney, end-of-life care planning, assistance with all kinds of legal issues. So, that, again, is supplements. Alzheimer's Association provides some specialized information assistance for caregivers of individuals with Alzheimer's or dementia. The RSVP Program, that's a federally funded program, but that is the match and some additional funding is provided through the county to provide that volunteer opportunity program that helps both the older adult and the entities that receive that volunteer service. And then, the Senior Companion Program, we fund that as well to Mental Health Association. And that's a volunteer opportunity for older adults and it helps, but they provide services to older adults in their homes through that program. The transportation, which I've already talked about, we have buses and we have drivers and we provide transportation services. We use some Millevy funding for that. And that's primarily for older adults and individuals live out in the community, out in the rural areas and bringing them in. That's where the gap is. Critical Assistance Program is a program for kind of people that have critical needs, but there's no other resources. They might be needing help with their rent, their utility payments, they might have fallen behind. They might need prescription or medical assistance to help pay for services. So, it's just kind of based on that individual's need to get them what they need to help them, again, stay in the community and maintain their health. We have the RSVP Volunteer Transportation Program, where we partner with four senior centers to do that. So, we reimburse them to coordinate rides with the people that are already volunteering at senior centers. But it helps extend and amplify the transportation services. Supplemental commodity home delivery, there's a commodity delivery program that the state runs, but they don't provide that funding to take it to the people's homes for those that can't get out. This funds for that. Adult daycare, Catholic adult daycare is for people that their caregivers need someplace for the older adult to go during the day so that they can stay working primarily. So, that funds that. And then, to help cover the cost of administration. And then, we have the Physical Disability Services that we fund directly to service providers for individuals with disabilities of all ages. And that's out of the general funding.
Can I ask a couple of questions before we go to further into it? Back up to nutrition services, home delivery, and congregate. In the county, outside of the city of Wichita, where do they get the food that they distribute?
For the Moms Meals.
Is that Moms Meals?
Yeah, Moms Meals.
So, I had lunch with the Mayor of Goddard yesterday, and they said that they're delivering meals, but didn't know where they came from.
Okay, so, we have, we have two programs. So, he's talking about the federally funded program that the Area Agency on Aging funds, and we contract with Aging Projects Incorporated. So, they provide home delivery for some parts of that three-county area that are more rural. So, typically, those, if they're not in the senior services area of the city of Wichita, that is one option available. They have had a waiting list for some of their services because of restricted funding. So, that would be the Moms Meal, the API program. And they have a kitchen where they cook meals and they deliver it out to the sites that have a congregate nutrition site. And then, from those sites, they often have volunteers that will do, like for people that are short-term needing, or in some areas, if there's no other options, a longer term. But that would not be county-funded.
I couldn't tell you where they came from either, so, yeah, I appreciate it. Let's go over to the RSVP Volunteer Transportation Partnership with the four senior centers. Are those only for seniors or what, you also run the disabled, so?
That is only for seniors because of that funding source is, the RSVP is for older adults.
So, how do we get to the disabled folks? They just call your office and schedule it the day before or something?
Yeah. Well, there usually has to be, yeah, they can call our office and we can determine which program they're eligible for. You know, if they're in the city limits, or if they're in the catchment area for the city transportation, or if they're in our area. So, yeah, they would call our call center number.
Oh, a question came up there today, Chairman and Annette, that... Oh, a question came up there today, Chairman, I met with Andrew. I know that we've got the study going, because we've been briefed on it twice now about the study, but I didn't know if there was some other place that they could go through disabled in order to be able to get transportation.
We provide through our transportation program, older adults and individuals with disability, and part of the funding that we get is specific to older adults and people with disabilities, and the other one is general rule, which is anybody.
Thank you.
Chairman, so on pages, let's say slides six and seven, you've listed 17 different Couple of questions. Do we have data on how many clients do they serve, sources of funding, how much funding is federal, state, or local funding? These are dated to kind of try to basically expand, if you will, the details of these 17 programs?
I don't have that with me today, but we can get that, the number of people. We do, we do an annual report from our providers about the number of people they serve, and then we do know if they're, what other sources of funding they're getting. So we know, like if we're funding them through Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, that's a different data set, but we do know when they're, what you would call is a braided funding, right? So some of their services are provided, sometimes with mill levy, and some are with Area Agency on Aging, but those are kept separate. We don't mix those two.
So in that case, there would be potentially two sources of funding for one program?
Mm-hmm.
So that needs to be clarified also.
Right, like Meals on Wheels.
Right.
So under the Older Americans Act, the vast majority, 49% of the funds we give for Older Americans Act, go to nutrition. And then the federal government says this is how much has to go for congregate, site-based, and this is how much has to go to home-delivered.
So in addition, so in addition, slide 17 here, I would like to know various sources of funding, if there's other sources of funding that are outside state, federal, and local, if these, again, if other program funds, if you will, that flow into one of these programs, that'd be nice to know that. How many clients that they serve? And then, again, where it's based out of. Some of these are based out of senior centers, for example, some of them are not. But if it's based out of a senior center, I'd like to know that detail for sure.
So out of the 17, the only one that would be based out of a senior center would really be the RSVP transportation, where we, where we partner with four to do that.
Well, some of the meal programs, especially Meals on Wheels and other meal, congregate programs are done, in fact, in senior centers.
And they.
Or then it's first, the meal food comes from the senior center, is delivered, or it's a congregate meal.
And that's a, that, that partnership is between the API and the senior center. So they have an agreement for a site-based, and the federal funding, pay, the state and federal funding pay for the meals in that program.
I guess my experience is sometimes the transportation programs are served out of the senior center, the home safety programs are out of the senior center, the meal programs are out of the senior center. If they're taking someone to a doctor and back, or to a grocery store and back, many times it's out of the senior center. A lot of the food programs, especially the congregate and the meal delivery services, are out of senior centers. And so I guess my point would be, if it wasn't for that space, where would all these things happen from? Where would be the, where would be the home base, you know, operation site, where do they operate from if that, if it wasn't for the senior center?
So sometimes nutrition sites are based, like Attic, we have a few, one or two I think of that are maybe more than that, that are in a senior-focused housing facility, like in El Dorado, it's a senior-focused housing, and then there's one in Wichita that is. We have had some in the past that have been in churches. So it is up to the nutrition provider for the congregate meal federally and state-funded program to find a site that would meet all the requirements, so. But they have traditionally, a lot of times, worked with senior centers, they provide the meals, they provide the funding for the meals and the congre, and then the nutrition. The senior center agrees to be a site for that delivery. But I'll get you that information that you've requested, I'll get that for you. So here is a funding by, this breaks down, the amount of funding that comes to our department is broken by county, state, and federal from the year 2014, so it's a 10-year history that you have here. So that'll kind of show you what's happened with the funding over that 10 years.
Okay, can we stop on this one, because this is really important? I wanted to show the commission historically what we have spent on aging through all funding sources for the last 10 years. And there's a couple of handouts that pertain to this. If we're in the back or not, Lyndsey, can you?
So there are a couple of handouts. The funding by government level is based on actual revenues anticipated to be received, whereas mill levy information actually speaks about the budget authority side of things. And so when you look at the one that is titled Cedric County Department on Aging and Disabilities, Mill Levy Information, you'll see that those lines at the top break it out by the different types of funding source. What this is showing is the revenues, which I think is obviously an important part of the equation, but in terms of what's actually being spent on services, that's what's shown on this table. And Maureen is standing in the back and is on call if you have questions.
Bottom line is, and if I'm reading this correctly, for example, in 2020, the total expenditure on the, the one you cited from Cedric County Department on Aging and Disabilities, Mill Levy Info, in 2020, totally, we spent $12,621,000?
That was the budget.
That was the budget.
The budget authority side.
Gotcha.
Because I think, yes, there's always the intent to spend, but that can speak to staffing instability issues. Sometimes there aren't providers to come in and do the service, so we wanted to show what the county had actually allocated.
Okay.
On this table versus what was actually spent, and so you can see how those budgets have changed over the years based on the different funding sources.
While we're on that, do you mind if I ask a follow-up? So look at 2024, it's $14.95 million. Am I reading it correctly, that only $3.6 million came from outside grants, so tax-funded 3.6 million?
The 3.6 million, so that's, the top one is the General Fund 110 budget.
Yep.
So that's for things like physical disabilities, so that's local dollars.
Right.
That's our general fund. Tax-funded budget for aging, which is the up to 1.0 meals that we talk about a lot, that's the 3.1 million figure. So you're right, those dollars did not come from state or federal sources.
So 3.6 million from local property tax dollars.
Well, general revenue, you know how we like to talk about general revenue.
Forgive me, yes.
Does that answer the questions?
Thanks, though. Can I ask you another question here? So we have allocated some one-time money, I think it was $100,000, I forget what year that was now, but is that included in this county trend line? I bet it is.
It is. The revised budget is always what's included in our reporting. And so after you all had authorized that $500,000 transfer, that was included in the budget. And I believe there will be some slides later on in the presentation that actually reflect the actual expenditure of those funds.
Thanks.
Right, Annette? Someone? I don't think so. Ready to move on?
Okay. So this is just kind of a visual to help you understand kind of what, what happens with CPA and the funding sources. So we have the Medicaid funding source, the Older Americans Act, some other grant funding, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and the Kansas Department of Aging and Disabilities. So we have, as I talked about, braided funding, we get a lot of different sources of funding, which have different regulations and processes and requirements and what things they fund. So it comes to CPA, and then through that, we do the statewide call center, the Medicaid functional eligibility assessments, the pre-nursing home assessments, admin case management, Senior Care Act with a state and federally joint-funded program. Then we have some direct services, and we could have made it a lot more complicated if we would have wanted to for the community service provider. So there's a lot of contracting that we do with a variety of different services. And when we looked at like how many contracts we have within our department with outside entities for different services, we have over 150 different contracts just for the aging side of that, while aging PD. And then we have the statewide Aging and Disability Resource Center, we had administrative case management, and the Kansas Farmers Market Voucher Program. So that's kind of, to just kind of give you a visual of what happens at that level. And then the next slide is for the Cedric County Department on Aging, where you have Cedric County funding, the Corporation for National Community Services, that's where the RSVP funding comes from, and then the Kansas Department of Transportation, and the city of Wichita. So those are funding sources. So the transportation program is focused on the county, so those funds come through to the Cedric County Department of Aging and Disability. So then you can see there, we, part of that county dollars helps pay for the match for the Older Americans Act, because that is, basically, Older Americans Act is viewed as seed money, you get state dollars, you get local match, and then you get donation. So it's based on a donation, so we ask or give people who get those services an opportunity to donate towards the cost of services. Then we do the direct services, we have administrative support for CPA, the PD program, RSVP, and transportation services. So next we go to the Department of Mill Levy Funding History. So going back to the beginning, in 1980, Wichita, when it came over to the Department, the newly developed Department of Aging, they already had a council, it was called the Wichita Cedric County Council on Aging. And this was based on the Older Americans Act that says, if you're going to do service delivery and allocate these monies, you need to have involvement from the community. The Older Americans Act is definitely a grassroots approach, so you need to include older adults, people of color, people of the socially, you know, disengaged, you know, caregivers, all of that. So that model was then, and then the, this advisory council makes recommendations on how the funding is spent. And you'll get RFPs, and then you come back, they make recommendations. So the Cedric County Advisory Council was based on that model. And, and so you can kind of see how that plays out, and how the Department on Aging is different than other budgets, and how we involved the council to make those recommendations. So it started from the very beginning. So in 1982, the Aging Mill Levy Tax was actually proposed to the BOCC by the Wichita Cedric County Council on Aging. They developed the proposal, and that they were looking at was, at that time, it was the early 1980s, and there was a lot of federal cuts going on. Some called it Reaganomics, so you're just, so there was, I've seen a lot of newspaper articles, and there was a lot of concern that funding was being cut, and older adults were at great risk, their services were being cut, so what could we do? And the state legislature had said, you can have a aging mill levy, you can, you can do that. So they brought the recommendation to the Board of County Commission, they accepted it, put it on the budget as a ballot question. So the official ballot, shall the following be adopted, and annual tax not exceed one meal shall be levied in Cedric County to fund a service program for the elderly. It passed on November 2nd, 1982, and the council had already developed recommendations for funding. And these were based in order, from the information I have, nutrition, in-home services, transportation, healthcare and medical equipment, housing assistance, information, home repairs, and senior centers. So that was the order that they put it in, a priority order. And it's interesting, because today, we still have these same types of services that are being funded by the Aging Mill Levy Tax Services.
Is this the same council we have, we call the?
Yes.
Aging Advisory Council today?
Mm-hmm.
Is this considered in stone, or is this something they can review and change the order if they wanted to?
Oh, that's not, that, that, this is just a historical. No, there is not any priority now.
Okay, I'll just say this, I don't know that they're ever asked this question, so it might be nice for them to have a review and have some control on prioritization of these programs.
The advisory council? That's always an option, yeah. So in 1984, which was the first time the money was allocated, because you know, it passed in late in 82, then you had to put the mill levy in, so the funding was allocated in 1984. At that point in time, there were 13 senior centers that were funded. And in 1984, they had a public hearing for the 1985 budget, and people were supportive of the services, of all the other services that were provided, but there were senior centers. And according to the information I read, there were three buses of seniors from one senior center that came and said, there's not enough money for senior centers. So I just tell you that for historical context, this has always been an issue that has come up at budget hearing, that senior centers. And I just want to give you a little context to think of that. So when the older adults we serve with the home-delivered meals program, or in-home services, or they don't coalesce and come together as a group to advocate for funding. And often, these populations that we're serving are the people that are most frail, they're sick, they're, they're needing services, they can't get out of their homes. So they're not coming to advocate for funding, and I just, I just wanted to share that perspective with you, that that's why you don't, what we don't hear at the local level, nor even at the state level, when the state goes out and does hearings on their, they have to do an annual needs, every four years, a kind of a focus group and go out and talk to communities. And that, that's just, that's just kind of how that plays out.
And there's one more part of this, and that is when, when this passed, Wichita, prior to this ballot question, had it, from the city been funding their senior centers, and because it, this passed, they transferred that responsibility, if you will, to the county, and they stopped providing funding to the senior centers from the Wichita City Council budget. So we have a number of senior centers from Wichita that receive no city funding, they may, may have some other in-kind helps, if you will, like a facility, access to a facility or whatever, but other senior centers around the county generally receive some type of municipality supports, whereas Wichita senior centers do not. And prior to this vote, they did.
And I can't speak to that, I don't have any information on that, but I do know that, and I think you have in front of yours in this slide, right, about what the other cities do. And that might be something to encourage Wichita-based senior centers to go and advocate to the city council. So just because they haven't doesn't mean they couldn't, right? I mean, that, other groups go in front of the city council and advocate for money. So it could be something that we could suggest they might consider. So here's some actual general fund information. 2020 through 2024. And so that, yeah, that's just the general fund. And then here you have the Aging Mill Levy, which is specific to older adult services. You can see that chin.
On that general fund, what is that, community-based services, 2023, that minus $173,000, what is that?
I was waiting for someone to ask me that. So Tim asked me this question the other day, and God bless Lee, she has already done the research. This is actually what was referenced earlier, that one-time funding, the 500,000 that the commission allocated. There was a vehicle that was ordered that wasn't received within that fiscal year, and so we actually moved it out of the general fund and into the Equipment Reserve Fund. And when that happened, that caused the commitment of funds to go out of the general fund, which then created a negative.
Oh, you got an answer. Okay, thank you.
And then here you have this for the grant information, so all of the other funding and the grant for these four years, so you can see kind of what's been happening there. All right, so now we're moving on to some demographic information, and this does complicate things, but there is no standard definition of older adult. It varies by program. So for the Older Americans Act, which was developed in 1965, so it makes sense that they set the age at 19, at 60. Back then, that looked different than it does now, but that has never changed. For senior centers and senior employment program, that's age 55. The Senior Care Act program, this state-funded program, is age 60, and for the Medicaid for Elderly Waiver Program, it's 65. So there is no standard definition, except it's always 10 years older than you are, or more. Well, it's definitely 10 years older than me. Like I tell my staff, I don't really want to get in a car wreck and have the newspaper article said, "An elderly woman was involved..." woman was involved in a car crash. So, okay, Jack, I think you're up. Jack is going to come up and go over his.
We could start over again.
All right, good afternoon. Jack Joseph with GIS. I'm going to quickly, hopefully about 10 minutes or so, go over senior demographics for Sedgwick County as it relates to the US Census and American Community Survey data. Going to give a quick overview of kind of some context, more or less, of those programs, where this data is coming from. And then we'll get into a mapping application I put together that I will hand out during email here at the end of the meeting for everybody to do a deeper dive into the data. So we look to the United States Census Bureau for any demographic data. They have over 130 surveys and programs that, under that umbrella, the two, well, probably the most popular is the US Census, taken every 10 years. And the main purpose of that is to provide counts of people for the purpose of congressional apportionment. Another program that, for demographic information that we would look to is the American Community Survey, which you may or may not be familiar with. Primary purpose of that is to measure the changing and social economic characteristics of the US population, education, housing, jobs, and more. So Census is primarily population, and many other programs under the Census Bureau, such as the American Community Survey, which I'll reference as ACS here moving forward, has kind of the details of what we're talking about today. Again, a little background. From 1940 to 2000, the US Census, every 10 years for the US Census, they would send out a short form to all households that would include basic questions of age, sex, race, Hispanic origin. And they would also send out what they were calling a long form, which is short form questions plus additional questions on social, economic, and housing characteristics. Only a subset of households received this long form questionnaire, about one in every six in 2000. After 2000, the long form was replaced by the American Community Survey Program. So they continue to, to collect that long form type of information throughout the decade, not just every 10 years. So it's now a nationwide continuous survey designed to provide communities with reliable, timely, social, economic housing and demographic data. It is compiled and then released yearly. There are two types of ACS data sets available. There are one-year estimates and five-year estimates. The one-year estimates are 12 months of collected data for areas of populations of over 65,000. It is probably the most current data, but it is the smallest sample size and the least reliable of, of the data sets available. And it will contain more areas of non-data gaps and holes, with only one year worth of surveys returned. Five-year estimates are 60 months of collected data for all areas. It's the largest sample size. It's the most reliable data, but it can be the least current since it kind of, it's that five-year aggregate. Just with any other survey, there's sampling errors, and it's subject to non-response rates. So that's kind of built into, to their data. Just real quick, want to talk about geographic areas with this data set. Census blocks are the smallest area of data aggregation. So that data is available with US Census and the one-year estimate data sets. Block groups are areas of multiple blocks. That's US Census data only. And then census tracts, the largest, are areas of multiple block groups. That is US Census data and the ACS five-year estimate data sets. We do have a public application on our website with some of this information. We have got the 2020 Census Population Map, the five-year income estimate, and five-year estimates for senior information. So that is out there for the public and anybody to use. But for the purpose of this conversation, I've created a mapping application with many other ACS data sets, internal application for any county staff to use. And it contains the following layers of senior center locations, provided by Annette and her staff, B O C C district boundaries for reference, ACS total population, total population age 55 and older, percent of seniors below poverty level. That, that data set is 60 and above. That will be on by default when you open the application. There's a layer of context for senior well-being, which kind of combines a handful of information into one layer. And then just some other general layers that I thought would be helpful, median age for the county, median household income, poverty status, and then some population and housing basics. I also threw in Sedgwick County property parcel data, and that's symbolized by total assessed amount. So the raw, raw stats for Sedgwick County, the US Census has a total population of 523,000. 65 and older, it was 80,000, which is about 15%. Now, five, the ACS five-year estimate, which the most current release is 2018 through 2022, aggregate one data set. They had the population at 522,000, so pretty similar. 55 and older is 153,000, 29%. 65 and older, you can see that that number actually is really close to the census number of 80,000. So it still remains about that 15% estimate. Median household income for the county is 65,000. Population below the poverty level is 13%, and seniors below the poverty level is hovering around 10%.
Everybody keeps telling us that the number of seniors is increasing, yours shows decreasing.
Um, not de, well, I don't have.
But that last slide.
Yeah, let me do it.
So the 2020 Census, it was 15.3%, and in the estimate 2022, it's going to be 15.2. That shows it's decreasing, isn't it?
Well, I wanted to show the difference between the two data sets. The 2020 Census is a snapshot in time from when all those surveys, when the census was taken.
Difference in the two types of census.
Two types of data sets, yes. But I wanted to show that they are, well, that's an estimate, and this is a little more concrete. They're very close. And the ACS is a rolling data set that is released annually, rather than a snapshot every 10 years. So even though it's a five-year aggregate data set, it's still pretty close to that, that 2020.
Jack, I haven't seen your slides yet, but, and maybe you'll get to it. But I think what Commissioner's question is, because we make budget decisions based on trends, historically, if you look at 2010 or previous five-year ACS estimates, are we on the way up or down? Can you?
I, I don't have those in front of me. But I don't have those in front of me today. But I can, we can look at some historical data.
One of the differences with the 21 and 20, 21 and 22, we had a higher-than-typical death rate for folks over 65 because of COVID. And so that may suppress those numbers a little bit as well.
I have, you probably have better data than I, than I do. But I actually generated a chart. I took the 65 and over population going back about a decade and plotted it. It is, no question, it's increasing. The trend line has enough data points, it's, it seems to be pretty reliable. The population is getting bigger in the county, but the population of 65 and over is also getting a larger percentage of the population. And again, that's not just a two data points, it's 10 data points or more.
If you're 55 and older, you see what's coming down the pipe.
Yeah.
29.3, that a lot of people have 55.
Oh. I have a question about that. But coming down the pipe, you see seniors below poverty level, 10.1%, 80% of USD 259 students live below the poverty level. So coming, just a thought on coming down the pipe, that's problems. But the seniors below poverty level, is that 55 and up? Is that classed up? Is that capturing that, or?
I'm trying to remember what data set I pulled that number from, because, yeah, senior, I, I, they've actually referenced seniors as 60 and above and 65 and above. So I believe it's one of those.
Playing from different premises.
I'd have to go back and look.
Regardless, that's helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions before I kind of demo the application that you guys can get your hands on and dig into? Okay. Also, so ESRI is our GIS software vendor that we use here at the county. We've used them forever. They're kind of the gold standard mapping software company. So they provide access to hundreds of curated ACS mapping layers. So they kind of do the dirty work of taking the tables that the Census Bureau releases yearly, does the analysis, adds them to the appropriate geometry, or geography, creates web mapping services for us to use. And I've thrown them into this application. So that's, that's kind of the source for where, where this is coming from. There's the application. It is an internal application for any staff to use. You'll see that we have, let me, turn that off. Okay. Close that. Okay. So you'll see the senior, senior centers as the blue dot around the county. The layer that is on by default when you open it is that, that seniors below poverty level, it looks like it's 16. I have trouble seeing that.
16.
It's 16 and above. Again, these are census tracts, so they will not follow B O C C district boundaries. They're the larger geographic area. US Census, we were able, during redistricting, we were able to use data down to the block level. So you'll see some of these, kind of these over here in particular, that, that cross boundary lines. Here's kind of a larger one. So, but you can click on any census tract with any of these layers and get additional specific information on those. The available layers are over here on the right, senior centers, districts, got the total population. Population 55 and above. Context for senior well-being. This was a layer that I found that I thought would be helpful. It kind of combines a couple of different, a couple of different data sets into one layer. Median age for the county. Median household income for census tract. And again, click on any one, and you can dive deeper into, to that data set. Poverty status. And then some population and housing demographic information. Again, this is another layer that, that combined some of these into one.
Hey, Jack, how do we get our hands on this?
I will email it out to everybody here.
I'm trying to see disparities between districts, if, if there are any.
Sure.
I saw poverty level, that, there seem to be some things there. But I, I don't, I was looking at the aging populations. I was trying to see if there was any disparities between districts that was noticeable. And poverty, there certainly are, but.
Is there, is there data in a numerical table that we could look at as well, to coordinate, if you wanted to say, I mean, is there, is there a way, is there a way to look at this data in a spreadsheet, for example? If I want to say, show me what District 5 looks like compared to District 2 or something.
Yeah. So cutting it out by district gets a little tricky. Like I said, some of these census tracts span multiple districts. And so it's aggregated data, so there's not a good way to split that data between districts, because we don't really know where everybody is or where that data is coming from within that census tract, other than splitting that half and half.
Is there a way to show?
But we could, I could export out some of this into a spreadsheet.
It might be nice to see. This census tract actually covers a line. You could say it goes in districts 2 and 5. It's in both, if you will. I could, I could make some kind of a, a way to make that useful to me. But if it's wholly in one district, it might be nice to know. But if it's, if it crosses a boundary line between districts, to show that it's in both districts, because it crosses the boundary, that might be very helpful.
Sure. Are there particular data sets? There, there's a lot in here. So.
Well, I think the ones I'm interested in is the poverty, the, the wages. I'm not sure if you've, obviously, I think the, the, well, those are the two I care about probably the most at this point.
Okay.
Do you got first?
Yep. Yeah. And I'm, once you kind of get your hands on this and dig into it, I'm happy to be available for questions and support. If there's a layer that you, or data out there that you know of, that's not in there, I'll do my best to add it. So.
Do you get into, do you get into education data, all any of this?
Education data is available.
Thank you.
That's really the demo with application. Like I said, I'll email it out to everybody.
You also, you also get into like assessed value, that, or, is there a number of housing units? Is that also part of any of this?
Right. So there are some housing information within, within this layer. It's got population, got some age, less than 18, 65 and older. How, how many housing use it, housing units, whether they're owner-occupied, renter-occupied, vacant. And then age and income is, is on this layer. So it's kind of combined to a couple of different tables.
Very good, Jack. Thank you.
Yep, sure. And then, sorry, one last, just showing you here, I do have the parcels on there by assessed amount. And you can click on those. That will give you owner, assessed amount, total value, and the function of that property. So trying to throw everything, everything in the kitchen sink.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, it's good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Out of, with Jack's presentation done, now we're getting into the tart part of the discussion. We're going to talk about senior centers. To back to, out of respect for Commissioner Dennis' original statement, I don't know if we can make, equalize this without further discussion. This goes into some history of senior centers, the definitions of the tiers, and how the tiers were developed. Do you want to proceed, or what the will of the board on this? We're at a point now where most of the discussion from this point forward is senior centers.
I haven't seen a request for the budget for the seniors, but I guess we got that next week. But at that point in time, I'm hoping that whatever you present is equitable across the board for all five districts. So not knowing what you're going to present, I don't know if I've got questions.
Okay. Let's, let's proceed, and then we'll keep that in the back of our heads. Away we go, Jack.
Okay. So before, I did want to just address, because the question came up about poverty in older adults. And just, just so you're aware, the level for poverty hasn't changed in a long, long time. So it's very, very low. And older adults, by, as you could see, don't score highly for being at the poverty level. But understand that they have some different kind of situations that they experience. They have usually higher medical costs, prescription costs, and often for older adults, what we see, that they can often outlive their resources. So just something to keep in mind when you think about that. So I've been to a couple of different conferences this year that have really, I've found some good information on senior centers. So that's why it's the national information. So the first senior center was established in New York at the Hudson Senior Center. And at that time, understand, in 1942, number one, we didn't have a lot of people living to old age. And number two, there really wasn't services. This predates even the Older Americans Act. So it was, at that point in time, kind of what they were considered, multipurpose centers at the community level, and a lot of charity groups and churches and organizations were coming together to provide services to older adults who virtually had no services. The Older Americans Act, as you saw in 1942, number one, we didn't have a lot of people The Older Americans Act, as you saw in 1973, area agencies, and then over time, the funding started coming down. And early on in the history of Older Americans Act, the funds could be used and still can be used for bricks and mortar. But it's rarely used for that anymore because there's not a lot of money. And the federal, federal funding for Older Americans Act is really very static and hasn't increased much at all over the last 20, 30 years. So nationwide, when they've looked at it, the most senior centers receive the majority of their funding from fundraising grants, corporations, local government. That's just kind of the model of how that is, and not a lot of federal funding that's going into that. The federal funding often provides for services that are then provided at the senior center. So it's a good place to provide some services because it's a place at the community level, at neighborhood level where people can come together and access services more easily. In the, I'm trying to read what I wrote there. In the history of the aging mill levy, senior centers are identified as a potential service to fund seniors services opened, Senior Services Incorporated opened their first senior center in 1968. That was before any other funding, and it was a church and charity groups coming together. And then January of 1969, they opened their nutrition program of home delivered meals. So they, their services predates any of the funding that was coming. And it was local community members, churches and charity groups coming. Now, we have tried to find some history of when the other senior centers opened. And when we've reached out to the senior centers, a lot of them don't have that information. We do know that in 1984, there were 13 senior centers that were funded, and we do have the names of those senior centers. And then a few years later, there was up to, there was now 17 senior centers that were funded, but the funding kind of varied over the years as the funding for some of the other core services maybe took, had a higher priority. So the, the ACL, Administration for Community Living, has funded the National Institute of Senior Centers to start doing some work around senior centers to try to help senior centers develop and modernize and change. So that's just happened within like the last couple of years that they funded that. So it's a resource center that's available to help senior centers because they realize that there's a lot of challenges. There's a lot of, there's been, after COVID, people quit doing social kind of things, and they've seen the impact at senior centers, less people using them. At the national level, this is national level data. So there really was the desire to, it's like, how can we revive that? How can we help them at this national institute? At the presentation I went to, it said that they currently have 2,000 members. That's, there's really not a national registry. They estimate that there's 10 to 11,000 senior centers, but they don't have a registry of that. They, the people from the National Institute said, there's really not, there's pretty minimal information on research of the, you know, actual research data on the impact of senior centers. We know, that we hear from senior centers, we hear from people that go, we know that there's, you know, information increases socialization. It's a place to come and gather together and have different kind of activities, but as far as research, there's really not a lot out there. So the, this National Institute is planning, I went and talked to the woman afterward, the, the head of that, she said, I asked her about funding. Do you know about funding? How are they funding? She goes, we really don't have data on that, but they're planning on doing a national survey to try to gather that information, to have real hard data to say, how are they funded? What does that look like? Their best estimate is about 50% of their funds, about 50 is local government. And when I've talked to my colleagues across the state, very few AAA's put any money in. They fund services that are done there, but the, most of the senior centers are funded by county, local counties and city, and that's where the funding comes from. Then I went to another presentation, Philadelphia Corporation for Aging. That is a very, very large, I mean, I think they have like an $80 million budget. So they're a very large area agency on aging. And they have decided that they got some funding and they're doing a deep dive into senior centers to try to figure out what's the best model, what's the best practice. So they've been and visited senior centers across the nation to try to find the best practice models. And then they're putting together, and they should have it next year, kind of a template for senior centers, what it should look like and what they should be doing. And what the, the information they had to date said that those senior centers that were the best practice models were really those that focused on providing services and, and providing a center to really focus on those low-income, most at-risk population. And that, that a key component was the, the facility, that it really should be kind of updated and pleasant, and so it would encourage people to come. And one of the senior centers that they, in San Diego, they went to said was right beside a homeless shelter. And that they had a lot of the homeless older adults coming there. And they said, it was pretty fascinating. And as you may or may not be aware, the fastest growing population of those that are homeless are age 50 and up. It's a really, older adults are just getting priced out of their homes. And so we're seeing a lot of, lot of that coming. So those are a couple of things that are happening at the national level. I'm seeing a lot more dialogue about senior centers and trying to figure out how to modernize or move forward or figure out how, how to, how to, how to do that. So this is kind of the history. And we've kind of gone over this a little bit. In 2005 and 2006, the Board of County Commission requested the department develop and present funding options for senior centers. That's not an easy task. So it did take a while. It was decided to implement that over a two-year time period, 2007 to 2008. And then there was a specific table. This is how it's going to happen. This is how much going to be in the first year and in the second year. The key thing I think there was that no one lost funding. Everybody got a little bit. Some got more than others, but and at that point in time, it was like, yeah, this was really innovative. It was a best practice model. We went to other places in the United States and presented on it. It included that opportunity for centers to perform at the next higher level for two years. If they were assessed, then it would be recommended. And if funding was available, then it would be allocated. But we know that some economic situations happened, and there was funding disruptions and economic downturns. But from 2008 to 2011, we saw some changes. Some centers quit requesting funding. They didn't want to meet the criteria anymore. There was one that was closed due to, they could not meet the, the criteria. They had a two-year plus record that they were not performing, and they couldn't bring it up. So that program was eliminated. And then we had one, the downtown senior center that was at the highest level said, you know what? We can't meet that criteria. And they were, they were moved down and Derby moved up to that top slot. So we saw that movement there. And then again, in 2011 to 2015, we saw the impacts of budget reductions. And the majority of the budget reductions really were focused more on it. There was some to senior centers, but the most were taken internally reductions. And then to some of our core services, the other funded services. In 2016, the B O C C requested a new, look at some new funding options. That was presented in 2017. Several options were presented. We still have that information, but there was lots of options that were presented, but there was not consensus on a movement forward. So in 2018, a decision package was requested and submitted. That was for three senior centers to move up. That was not approved. In 2019, it was agreed, it was decided that the funding formula would be frozen. That would become the base funding and any future increases would be one-time only based on submissions by the centers and then the advisory council would make recommendations, but that was one-time only funding. It couldn't be, it wasn't built into the budget to be ongoing. So as you know, the, the funding formula continues to be identified by senior center staff as a basis for increased funding, and it does create conflict at, at the budget time. That's just, so here's some information. We did purchase and provide for the senior centers and management information system, M I S. And these numbers are based off of that, except for the small senior clubs. They don't have that. But we, they give us annual reports. So this is 2023 membership, and this is unduplicated, and it is for Sedgwick County residents only. Some had members we found that were from other counties or from other states or, so this is the, the membership data we have from 2023. And I just want to, to, to say that to be a member, an individual is, when they come to the center and they say, well, you'd like to join. So we, there are some people that are members that have come once or twice. So this doesn't indicate that they come on a, a daily basis or a weekly basis. So just, just for your information. And then this is information for those that are in the management system for the average daily attendance. That's compiled over a period of time. We took the, the weekly and then compiled it for average daily.
I find that number for Derby to be, doesn't look right to me. How sure are we that that's the correct number?
They're using the management information system, which is a card where you swipe it when you come in. So that's the data that was in the system.
Okay. Well, anyway. I'll just hold my, hold my comment. Thank you.
The other thing I did want to point out here, I think, was the membership. So we had a lot of the million, and you see that I have an asterisk there. And that is because in 2023, they were not using the data system. And it was a manual report. And I have, we have a staff person, the, the program coordinator, she goes out and does an annual review. And when she pulled up the data, she did find some errors and some issues that people were from out of state, other areas. And it, from the data, it was clear that there, some of those people had been on that list for a very long time. She knew a couple of the people and they were deceased. So we, we were not confident with that number at all. They did, were, started on the system last year, but they took a really long time. They have some technical difficulties and some challenge with technology. So it's challenging for them, but we think that they're actually up and using it this year correctly. So, so the good thing about that management information system that we now pay for, for the senior centers at the, the level up and above, not the senior clubs, is that it really gives us some, some good data. And it gives us unduplicated data because we've not had that before, because people could be members of multiple senior centers. So this is unduplicated. And then this is the information, the senior centers and the amount of funding they get from their city or local government. So you've got Mulberry, that is, you know, you've got two that are straddling counties, Mulberry and Sedgwick. So you see a little bit of, of what's going on with those two. Yeah, this is just a high-level general. This does not include every single service, every single center. This is just kind of on average. This is what we find that senior centers provide. There are always exceptions and outliers that provide more or a different type of service, but on average, we'd say the majority of senior centers, this is what they provide. But it's not specific to each center. Some provide more, like Commissioner Howell mentioned, some provide transportation. I know that Park City does transportation, Derby does transportation. I think Park City's waiting for a bus and Mulberry might be as well. And Hayesville has a transportation. So that, that does, and they are funded, I think the majority of those are funded through Wichita Transit, provides some of that funding for the newly urbanized areas, what they call that. And then these are just kind of some of the services. And I've already been over this. This is services that provided by CP triple A Sedgwick County Department on Aging. So this is the levels and the funding amount and how each senior center is, is categorized, and that is based on the previous funding formula, which is now referred to as base funding. So. And then the performance criteria, and it does vary by level. I think you have that handout. But you can see it does change and it increases at, at the higher criteria level. So now we move to the part where I'm just going to share some possible options for your consideration, and then I will turn it over to you for your discussion. So these are just some, some that we kind of came up with as possible options. Reassess, reinstate the funding formula and assess each center to determine the appropriate funding level based on current performance standards. And then provide a recommendation for increased or decreased funding to commissioners and potentially institute a funding moratorium for two to five years. Now, when we go out and assess, some could be functioning at a lower level. So we just wanted to make sure that that was in consideration. Some would be performing at a higher level than current funding formula. Some could be at a lower level. So that, just a consequence of, of something to keep, to consider for that. Another option, establish a base funding amount for senior centers. You know, a total overall budget, then we issue R F P for senior centers. Anybody could apply, current providers, and then the applications would be reviewed by the advisory council and funding recommendations brought to the, so it's kind of like starting all over. That's kind of start from scratch, put it out there. There's another one, is divide senior center funding into five equal amounts, issue R F P for senior center proposals for each district, applications reviewed by the council, and recommendations presented to the B O C C for approval. Another option, provide a cost of living increase for all centers with total amount of funding established by the commissioners. If you want to increase funding, just have a cost of living increase. And then apply that. Another one is develop new funding formula options to present to commissioners, really. But commissioners. And then another option would be to establish a flat amount of funding for all senior centers. Everybody gets the same amount. Take the money, divide it up. And that's what I have.
Good job.
Don't see any questions. And that will present in the budget hearings next week. So I think this arms you with as much data and information as we could historically give you. If you want something different, by the snow. And I guess from, from where I sat is, do you like the budget trend with what's going on with the agent department? We look at trends in all departments as we come up, how much we fund them, what the trends look like going forward. Do you want to push more money in this, less money, status money? So that's, I think, you think about those things before we come at the budget hearing, and then we'll, but if there's any technical questions or historical questions we can answer, please do that now. We can add that to the process going forward.
The presentation was pretty good.
I don't know if the commissioners remember or not, but I think we're here today because I made a motion a few weeks back when we were adopting those contracts. And the motion was trying, trying to basically invest in District Three because of the argument that they don't, it's a, it's a, it's a chicken and egg problem. They can't get the funding because they don't have the people. They can't get the people because they don't have the funding. So I suggested with the motion, I don't have to read it right now, but I, I did read it the other day when this came up for discussion. And it was basically to provide, if you will, the next level of funding for three senior centers that have been deserving, if you will, for a very long time, and they, they, they have extraordinary needs. There is local funding for all three of them. And in doing that, I was going to suggest we would actually increase funding for four other senior centers. The total for that would have been $122,000. And this would, my thought would be that if those senior centers don't currently meet the performance measurements that are necessary, that they would be required to meet that within two years. Otherwise, it would be cut back to the previous funding level for at least two years. So there was a, again, this is offering them an opportunity if they want to, if they believe there's a need and they, they wanted to have that funding to build their senior center and develop, if you will, the membership that would need that or would, would desire that. This is a way to get the funding there, even though we know they don't meet the performance measures going into it. measures going into it. I will argue, once again, just a couple of numbers here. Oaklawn receives about, this is me doing a quick math here, about $8100 per mil is their current mil levy. I'm sorry, is the current dollars per mil. We receive in Central County roughly 6.6 million. I'm not sure he's in 2020, coming into our next budget cycle, probably somewhere north of that, actually, but let's just say it's a $6.6 million per mil. Oaklawn receives roughly $8100 per mil. They're over, I believe they are at, today, they are at And the majority of folks that use the senior center there are not from the Oaklawn Improvement District. We just went through a whole lot of data to show that the funding should be tied to the need. We talked about poverty, we talked about those that have maybe more of a physical need than others. If you want to tailor that funding to where the need is, I will argue that Oaklawn definitely needs to be considered. The other two districts, the other two centers I thought would be worthy of discussion today would be Clearwater and Hayesville. And then the other four centers were out in District Three. So the total for those would be $122,000. I could read the motion if anybody wants to hear it, but we're obviously, we're not going to vote today, obviously. But I just want to make that point that the idea of dividing the money by five violates everything we've heard today. I will never support that. If you want to go down that path, let's divide the entire budget by five. I'll play that game. I don't think that's reasonable. It's not how we do things in Central County. I would win if we made that change. Right now, there's a lot of money that leaves, goes into the budget, that is invested in places across county where it's needed. I would say District Five because we have less roads, less bridges. It doesn't come into the center of the city at all. It kind of misses the center of the city, that we don't see the funding going to District Five as much. So if we wanted to play this game, we could do it, but I don't think that's what we ought to do. And I would be okay with reinstating the funding formula. Let me just point out, this was passed in 2019. I think it was a really ugly budget cycle. There was a motion that day to throw a bunch of money at aging. Didn't even have earmarked it, tell me how to figure out what to spend money on later. But it was an ugly discussion, and I may just make a point, it was three commissioners that voted for that, two of which are no, actually, two of those are no longer here. It was a three-to-two vote. I want to highlight who it was that voted for it or against it, but I don't think it was, it was not a good discussion. And I have been working now for, to help Oaklawn on this topic since 2016. This is the eighth, ninth year in a row. And we're talking $22,000, which is for them about, almost three mils of property tax. I think it's time, considering what they do and how important that is to that community. If you don't believe me, go over there, I'll take you over there and show it to you. I think it's, I think it's wrong for us to turn our back to this again. I would, I'd make the same advocacy for Clearwater and Hayesville. I'm tired of the politics of this. I said, I said we did not, thank you so much.
I would just add, I'm, I'm okay with looking at some of these options that we can find reasonable, but I just want to reiterate that when these were frozen, some were frozen at the level that they could have been moved up and they were not at that time. And so I, as we're having the discussion, I want to be very aware of those centers because I believe that they should have been frozen at the other one, which means this whole time they have lost significant dollars that would have been really helpful for their operations. So just as we're talking, please just keep that in mind, that some of these centers should have been at a different level this whole time. And as we know, that people are frustrated with this, I could only imagine how frustrated I would be if I was in that position, knowing that other senior centers who met the same metrics as us had been frozen, where they were receiving 20,000 more, however much it is a year. So just please keep that in mind as we have the conversation.
Annette, may I ask you a question? As this stands now, do you think that the senior centers, your opinion, are they, are they an effective conduit for administering senior services? Are we, or is there more that we could get out of senior centers that helps to justify public dollar support or in growing public dollar support? Meaning, can we change requirements of senior centers to make sure that they're getting more out of the senior services so we tie it all together better? I hope I'm making sense.
Well, there's always the opportunity to change the requirements. You know, some of the things we've done over the years, the last few years with ARPA, we've invested money in senior centers and given them the opportunity to apply for funding. Some of that was for modernization, some of it was for change in facilities, some of it was for equipment, some of it was for, you know, for those that have the senior nutrition sites. We funded the provider to make improvements and purchase equipment for the nutrition site. We are in the process now of using ARPA dollars to buy large-screen TVs and get those installed. And then there's a backside to that, that can, we can send programming to the, to the senior centers because we have some staff that do exercise program, diabetes prevention program, information and assistance. So we're, so we're working on doing some of that. I think that there are other options to help get more services there. Some would do a great job with it. For a lot of people that go to a senior center, it is that socialization is the place to go, and it's at the local level. And I know that's important because social isolation is critical.
Just let me cut to the chase. We are looking at a budget that is daunting, and where we're talking about allowing increases in departments or in specific subsets of departments, it's because of things like public safety, it's because we want to improve quality of life. Some instances, it's life or death in some of these things. I would take 911, I would take what's happening with the sheriff's office. Trying to, on the senior center conversation, I'm trying to figure out, is there a way to where all these important services that are happening? And I would say that we saw some maps, particularly in my district, where poverty is significant and there are vulnerable seniors in all of our districts. Is there a way to make sure that the senior center is doing some things with the senior services in order to get the funding?
So I think what you're asking, Chairman, is can we, if we go back to the beginning slides, department services provided, is there a better way to provide nutrition services? Transportation, assessment, counseling, pre-nursing home assessments, apply these into senior centers to value-add? I think, is that a better way to, can we do that, or?
If they're federally or state-funded, no, that does just, I don't think that's possible at all. And a lot of these, we fund other providers to do the service, so to say you have to go do it at a senior center would be challenging. I think that maybe changing some of the options and say, requires senior centers to do different types of things.
I'm just seeing, I'm looking at what they're required to do, and some of this stuff is like, submit a biannual report, publish a newsletter, and these are all important. I'm not saying they're not important. I'm not saying what happens at senior centers now are important. I'm trying in my mind to justify, you know, some of these needs that are incredibly keeping people alive, seniors alive. How do we tie these things together so we can get more, more impact out of a senior center for, that is more alignment to what's happening with senior services? I hope I'm saying that correctly.
I think from a senior center perspective, one of the challenges to do that is, some of the things that you're talking about are technical, they're medical, need to be licensed or at least trained to be able to do that. And senior centers have really small staffs, and so for them to be able to deliver the services that the department arranges to be delivered, probably not going to be able to fit into their current environment without a significant.
Still have capacity, yeah.
I have another question, sorry. Is there any way that we can see where the senior centers are today? If we had the funding model as is, where would they land today? And how is that different from where they were at the time it was frozen? Now, I know a lot of people, I'll say Hayesville, for example, they did a lot to meet those needs that, to make the requirements, and I think between now and then, between then and now, however you want to say that, they might not continue the exact same thing because they haven't had to. So I just, I know it won't be necessarily exactly what I'm wanting to kind of gauge, but I, it would be interesting to see where senior centers would fall in that funding model today. And just knowing, like Commissioner Howell had made a comment, could we move someone up and then say with, if they don't get to where they need to be in two years, if they're not far off from it anyway, then what does that look like? But I just think it'd be a good thing for us to know where people would stand today as we're having the conversation. Because what I would really like to see, and I don't know if this is going to happen or not, but can we right the ship somehow for this year? And then if we want to look at significantly changing the funding model or making improvements or, you know, any of the things on that list that you had mentioned, that would have to be a bigger discussion that could be done in the timeframe we have right now for budget. So could we just right the ship this year? Let's put people where they should be this year. What does that cost us? And then how can we look at next year if we're going to do an overhaul of the system or try to look at ways we can make improvements or whatever that looks like? It's just not going to be done realistically in this budget cycle. So if that makes sense.
Okay, it does.
That wasn't a question from me, right? Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure. It's just like, are we answering that?
Thanks, Annette, appreciate it.
Just, just again, I think the original intent is important, and I keep going back to that. I'm not against putting this back on the ballot. We're going to talk about that. I keep talking about, if you put this back on the ballot and clean this up. Part of the problem is, it's opined now, zero to one is meeting the law. This says up to one mil, and our legal counsel, no offense to anybody, they did a great job, but they said up to one mil simply limits it to zero to one, it can't be more than one. Other words, before the ballot passed, we could have done it, and then we wanted to do. Could have passed the resolution and done two mils if we'd wanted to. We didn't have to do anything, but we passed this to get the voter, voters to speak to it, and they said, yes, we want this to be done, and it passed on a, on a margin of two to one. 66 percent, 66.4% of the people said yes on that November 2nd ballot question. We have, and by the way, back in the day, I ran my chart in front of me today, but I believe the number of seniors today, not only is it a greater percentage, but since the population of the county is much higher, the number of seniors today is about double what it was back when this passed. I think we should put this back on the ballot. And it's interesting, I go back and read the original discussion that happened in the media. I've got about 10 articles, I have to share those with you. I'll be glad to share them with you if you ask. About 10 articles, and it's very interesting, the comments that were being made by the, by the people that were discussing whether to vote for or against this ballot question. It was very obvious that the people who were in favor of this thought there would be new funding for senior programs. By the way, in the very same articles, it talks about, the very first thing they talk about is feeding the elderly through programs such as meals on wheels and lunches served at senior centers, top priority on their list. It goes on, talk about other things like transportation programs and physical mental health, mental wellbeing of older Central County residents and otocles. The top of their list was essentially congregant meals and meals on wheels programs that are delivered through the senior centers. That's what they said back then. Fifty-seven, at the time this passed, 57 other counties had been, had already passed an aging mil levy. The average mil levy for those 57 counties was six tenths of a mil. I believe the first year we funded this, it was almost 0.8 mils. What is it now, Ms. Lindsay Prozessow? About 0.31? 0.37? About a third of a mil?
Or 0.24, maybe three mil, yeah, 0.37.
0.385? One other thing about that, though, some of that money is used for administrative, administration of senior programs and senior services. I get the idea by reading the plain language of the ballot question is, this should be a block grant. We should, we should send this out, you know, have people, have people, if you will, apply for funding by them delivering service. We should block grant this out. I don't think it was ever intended for us to use any of that money for administration within the county. I don't believe that's the intent of what the ballot question said. And yet all done, I'll let me read this, the last paragraph says, "It's the Kansas way. Some people may think it's corny, but Kansas always have believed in taking care of their own. They can spend their tax dollars more wisely and more efficiently than the federal government can any day. Central County residents should underscore that belief by voting yes for the aging mil levy on election day." And this article's very nice, but it was very obvious that the original intent of the ballot question and the understanding of the people who voted for it was that we were going to provide, if you will, services through this, up to one mil. And right now, we're basically 0.385. And when you look at people like Oaklawn and find out, why are they struggling with $22,000, when we have 6.4, 6.6 million dollars available per mil? Why are we not doing what the people told us to do? To me, this is a mandate. I would rather put this on the ballot. Let the people speak. I'm pretty sure, knowing there's a larger percentage of seniors in the population today, especially about double what we saw before, as much as we all hate property taxes, I'm pretty sure this would pass. Please, let's put this back on the ballot. That's really what I want. How do we do that, Mr. Manager?
The body would have to request staff to do that.
Okay, well, I'm telling you something, my perspective, that's what needs to happen. So I don't know how else to say this more clearly. Please, my colleagues, let's get this back on the ballot. Thank you.
Okay. Conversation will continue. Annette, thank you. And Jack, thanks, appreciate it. All done? All done.